Where we can get through. We're up and running. Excellent, excellent. Well, welcome good folks to our May Policy Committee Meeting. Uh, we have a number of things on the agenda. Uh, we'll try to get through as many as possible. And uh, we'll begin with public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? No one has signed up. Fantastic. Then we will keep moving and that will bring us to the approval of the minutes from the April meeting. Policy colleagues, any?
They're they're good by me.
Good by me as well. The minutes are so approved. And that will jump us right into policy uh, zero, one, one, six. Our Title IX policy. Uh, this is a uh, a new policy, but not a new practice. And I'm glad to see that we have some folks here to answer some questions because as maybe anticipated. I'm sure some of us have some questions and we'll proceed from there. Uh, this is already up on our, um, I was gonna say our course site. I'm still, I gotta, I'm on, I'm not on campus anymore. This is up on our district site. Uh, and so folks can already see the Title IX procedures that are here. And we are, uh, as we've said a couple of times, uh, adopting the policy to actually be in line with our practice. Uh, this has made it through a first reading. We are reading for a second time to um, submit to the board for a second reading and adoption. And uh, I have a couple of questions and or small edits. Uh, but before I get there, I can um, pass to my board colleagues or I'm happy to jump in however works best for folks.
I was, I was just mentioning that the time I had set aside to read this before the meeting, I ended up. Um, engaged in many conversations with my neighbors as I walked the dog and I got back at four thirty and jumped in the car and came here.
Well, I have a couple of questions and and they're, they may be small. But let me put my glasses on. Um, one of my questions, I believe, because I don't have the pages number one, two, page three, I believe. And maybe I asked this before and I apologize, but I know at the collegiate level, there's a change in who is and who is not a mandatory reporter. Um, does the same thing hold true for uh, K twelve? I guess what um, I'm asking is that I know that there has been um, sizable changes to Title IX legislation over the past five or six years. And we used to have a much wider range of who was a mandatory reporter. And I'm wondering if that same thing holds true for the K twelve level. So a student is having a conversation with a teacher. Is that teacher a man, a mandatory reporter, a mandated reporter? That's helpful for me. Fantastic, fantastic. At the bottom of that page, there's a sentence that says, all district employees who witness or receive an oral or written report of potential or possible sex discrimination must immediately inform the Title IX Coordinator. And I just had a question about, because this is policy and why wouldn't we have a question about English or language? Uh, the use of the word must. Is there other language that we've used? Has that been vetted? You know, like is required or does must capture that?
We have run this through legal. Um, and I was just at a training. On a virtual training with our law firm, Bonn, Shenick and King. A couple of attorneys because New York State has actually updated the uh, sexual harassment policy. And so I will be coming to you in the next couple of months with another sexual harassment policy update.
That has to do with employees.
Employees, yeah. So um, right. So in relationship to labor law, this one will be. Um, and there are some changes. One of the significant changes is that, it used to be that uh, folks were encouraged and now folks um, they've, they've strengthened the language around that. Um, so I'm happy to revisit this and just get a a triple check from legal in relationship to must. Um, and then if, if it, if you'd like, I can email you all. Um, and we can go from there and decide if we want it on one of the more upcoming agendas, so we don't have to wait another entire month.
I also went to a webinar by Bonn on sexual harassment uh, prevention state law. So I have the notes right here.
So, but did you go there on Thursday morning?
No, I went there on February eighth. I went to, yes. And then I went last Saturday, I think, uh, for um, virtual on um, uh, it was policy on um, uh, largely free speech and First Amendment rights. There are big changes happening there too.
But just to clarify this point, you're saying it, it used for that phrase, it used to be may report and now they must report. And Sean, your question is, do we want something stronger than must?
Yeah, and I'll wait for what the legal recommendation is, right? Because I can see that we've been making these moves because must still doesn't seem as strong as like required or or legally required or legally mandated, whatever the phrase may be as well. So I'm just inquiring about what that looks like. And so I'll wait to hear, or we can wait to hear back from Lily when where the other on on that one. Um, trying to make sure I have the appropriate page, so please bear with me. Uh, this is on page five. It is um, item C. It's under definitions. Um, excuse me, it is not under definitions. It's under general requirements. So what page is that? Is that page six?
General requirements for the investigative.
Yes. So um, item C says the Title IX Coordinator, Investigator, Decision Maker involved and simply should it say or Decision Maker? Title IX Coordinator, Investigator, or Decision Maker? Tricia, are you capturing that?
I am.
Uh, got you Lily. Thank you. And Lily, I'm them, on page seven, under item L. We have a, we have different language, which says the Title IX Coordinator, the Investigator, any Decision Maker or any other person participating on behalf of the district. Didn't know if the, if those should be the same language or and and they're doing different things. So I would understand why they wouldn't be. I just reading them back to back just caught my eye. That's all.
No, it definitely should say that in C.
Gotcha.
As well. Um, and that's just, just so people understand the common practice. There are certain Title IX situations where we call in an outside group, like a lawyer from the S and K. In order to complete the Title IX investigation.
Gotcha. So we're making room for
Yep.
An independent third party or an outside organization.
Okay, so we're just gonna mirror the language in line one of L in line one of C.
This is more of a question. Uh, throughout a couple of our policies for today, there are repeated references to the code of conduct and um, uh, one, I'm just wondering what we think about that. Uh, because it seems to be in line with what there's an expectation of a code of conduct to be. Which for lack of a better word, it seems like it's positioned as a disciplinary code. And we're trying to change some of the idea of the code of conduct. Or vice versa, or related to that, do we, should we go back and make sure our code of conduct is mentioning and keeping in line with our various policies around bullying and uh, discrimination and harassment?
The good news is prior to adoption, we had already been working on both zero, one, one, six P, which is this one, Title nine one, and zero, one, one, five and zero, one, one, five R, which are our dignity act policies and regulations. So when um, so it was that January or February, when the code of conduct was officially adopt, adopted. Um, Dan and Amanda and I made sure that the language connected. So the definitions are the same that are in the drafts. The the general outline, you know, we put a section about Title IX and the code of conduct, et cetera.
So um, in, in this, this is just a formatting thing. In this policy, zero, one, one, six, the code of conduct is um, almost always in italics. And I don't know if that's something that we want to continue in other policies or like a um, one, I think it does make the code of conduct stand out. And that's probably why I saw it so much. Um, but two, it may be a, just to get general good practice for us if we're referring to either another policy or another procedure or whatever it is that maybe we may want to start using the italics or italics for.
Well, I'd like it in, in this case, because the code of conduct is a separate written document as opposed to just another policy. So it's, it's a common way of referencing another publication.
Gotcha. So that's gonna come back up for again for me when we get to the next policy, but we'll, we'll revisit that as well. We'll have fun with, with DAS and uh, one other, I think two other short items for me. I got the or again, I don't know what page this is. Dismissal of a formal complaint. Getting there now, yes. So um, the first section was uh, interesting to read, um, void of any context. But item C, so in essence, uh, the district must investigate the allegations in a formal complaint. The district must dismiss a formal complaint under Title IX if the conduct alleged. And item C says did not occur against a person in the United States. So I know that's probably legal language.
That's definitely from legal.
Because it did make me think about, we have students in experience that travel outside internationally. And so that's what the, our legal team is. That's probably taken directly from what the Title IX legislation says.
I will also check.
Uh, page twelve dismissal of formal complaint. It's up the, near the top. Um, and then it's item C. So that we should just check on as well. I was curious. And I didn't know if it was, I didn't know what the intent was. Was it a reference to location? Was it a reference to citizenship? Was it a, you know, I was just trying to think about what was the intended reference to?
I honestly don't remember.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I'm, I'm going to guess that it, it has to do with physical location because I was a study abroad advisor for Cornell for sixteen years and things that happen outside the jurisdiction of the United States. Even on one of Cornell, on a Cornell run program, you know, that
Would change things.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Great, great.
But as it says in this policy, that doesn't mean that if something happens on an international trip that there is a recourse through, you know, some of these other policies, the code of conduct for
Yep.
It just can't be a Title IX.
Yep, yep. Page thirteen, maybe? Yes, page thirteen, the very bottom, item C. Allow for additional limited follow-up questions and responses from each party to occur within three, and I imagine it'd be three days after the parties have received response.
Very good proofreading, Sean.
Uh, I had really good coffee this morning.
On page thirteen, where was it? I'm so sorry.
Page, yeah, thirteen, very last line, within three, three.
Ah, thank you.
Um, and then it was about this page, or maybe it was page fourteen, where we start using the phrase decision makers. And so that may hearken back to what was said before, but then we start using that language exclusively. And so I don't know if we need a sentence or something that makes it, you know, to, just to clarify who we mean by the decision makers. And I don't know, right? Because earlier it's like the superintendent designate, decision maker, investigator.
So it said that a little bit at the, at the part where it, uh, the header. Um, so hearings and determination regarding responsibility. So uh, it says the district will designate an individual decision maker or a panel of decision makers to issue a written determination regarding.
I knew I missed it. Yep, perfect. Thank you. That works, that works.
And they cannot be the same individual as either the Title IX Coordinator or the Investigator. So we are differentiating.
Uh, and then the very last two items for me, um, were, we've had some of this conversation before, right? But we are required as a district to notify a wide range of stakeholders. And how do we do that? Or how do we plan to do that moving forward to provide notification of this policy and our practices?
This is uh, something that we were actually talking about on Friday evening at the pre-take back the night event with the, with some of the students.
Yes.
And um, you know, although there was gratitude that this is moving forward as a policy, it is seventeen pages and is quite lengthy. So uh, one of the suggestions that we were talking about with the students was having a essentially a, a one pager that is graphically somewhat interesting, right? I believe I've sent a lot of other graphics to you all in relationship to sexual harassment and violence prevention and response that are up throughout our secondary schools primarily. Um, and so there was discussion about that. Um, we've also done videos in the past. So a couple of weeks ago, our students had released a video. Used to be really long. I was also in the video and I was like, I make it really boring. Let's cut me out. And then we're like, you're right. No, it is a little intense. Uh, we had great ideas about the script and then in actuality, it was a little tricky. Um, where, you know, they talk about
The director.
Um, so April was sexual assaults awareness month. What's that?
And poetry month.
And lots of other things, I'm sure as well. Um, and um, so we had this video that talked about, you know, really raising awareness and awareness around consent. And also the resources that are available in district, but then talked about denim day, which was last Wednesday to show support around for survivors of sexual assaults. And to the take back the night event and pre-event um, that were taking place. So we've got some nice mechanisms that you know, I think really that are student-led and just, you know, just really shine on student genius. That's pretty, pretty well done.
So then we'll follow up with that. Part of it is sort of to continue to partner with our students is probably use our communication team, find different mediums, right? Um, I asked this of another policy as well. I know every organization operates differently. I assume Cornell does something similar, but there's an annual email. Granted, not many folks read it, but you know it's there if and when you need it, if that makes sense. And so do we do annual um, nonsense like that?
We do annual notices.
Well, we have so like each year we're doing admissions at Cornell. I'm hired anew and each year I have to read something and, and and show electronically that I have at least opened.
Yeah, and that we've, we've incorporated, um, so we, in our, in our yearly sexual harassment training that we do for all employees. Um, we've incorporate, we even have a slide that has three bubbles that converge around creating um, safe and affirming spaces, environments, right? Um, so there's sexual harassment labor law. There's Title IX, which is federal law. And then there's Aaron's Law, which is curriculum-based. Um, so it's K through eight. Curriculum legislation adopted in twenty nineteen. That's all about child abuse prevention and detection. And so that's a part of our training that we, we explain all of these things to folks.
Great, great. And then the only other thing for me is to, for us to do a check. Um, especially if this is gonna be a digital document that where it says the very last page, page fourteen, where it says related policies, protocols and documents. Just to make sure that all of those links are um, active and point to the right place. Um, because we've done some changes as well. So um, and or as we look through zero, one, one, five and zero, one, one, five R to make sure that it points to the updated version of those policies as well. So um,
If I ask you to do that part, I'll just tag you and that would be wonderful. Thank you.
But beyond that, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm um, having done the training at IC, having done additional trainings at IC as well and uh, I get that some of our language is sort of standard and pro forma and other practices are specific and using feedback from our students and our staff and our administrators. And so I was um, it's, it's good by me with that one. Those two checks, right? I think um, I'd be okay with sending it to the board for a second reading.
I agree.
Yep, me too.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So uh, zero, one, one, oh, before you go, my apologies. You know, it wouldn't be that easy. Uh, this is zero, one, one, six, six dash P. Um, so this is both a question for my policy colleagues as well, because we have a number of policies. Today, this has been happening. I'm wondering about the practice that we have of having a policy, a procedure and a regulation. And or if they should all be combined so it's one location or do we need a policy for this before we get to the dash P, like um, um, it's more of a process and organizational question about how we do our policies. If I was thinking about the medication policies coming on later, they're all, they're different numbers, but it's all sort of in the same packet. So it's easy to find and follow all of them.
Okay, so this is, okay, what we have, what we've just looked at is the policy.
No.
It's, it's the procedure.
The procedure.
But one could argue that the first two paragraphs would be the policy and the remainder of the document would be the procedure.
Right. And so part of my question was, do we want to pull those first two paragraphs out or a policy? Or do we, so it's, it's more of a, again, an organizational question.
It is neater and more um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? More standardized. It's, it's more conducive with what we normally do.
Yeah, I think I agree.
And I don't think in this case I would have a problem with repeating the language in this, in the procedure document, given that it may also contain legal language that we don't want to get away from. But I do think we would also would need then to create a policy as well. Just to be standard of what we've done previously.
The first two paragraphs.
Yes, right. Well, is it more than?
No.
No, because right after that.
Then it adopts this procedure. Yeah, I, that makes a lot of sense. So basically, yeah.
So then another very minutia oriented question. If we break those first two paragraphs out, we are a step behind with uh, with the policy then and the procedure.
Not necessarily. We can put it on for a reading and adoption if um, and the way in which I believe our policies are written with a major, a super majority and adopt a policy with a first reading. So if we have six votes or more.
But it would be, oh, I see. It would be a first reading. Yes, technically.
It would be a first reading of policy, zero, one, one, six as a policy, but it would not be a first reading of the language.
Right.
Correct.
Right. And we can ask the board for a first reading and adoption for the policy since they've already had the first reading of the actual language. So that minutia question I think is worthwhile. Um, at some point in time, I'm still considering that the more I get into this and thinking about the dash Rs, the dash Bs, we may want it. We may, may want to consolidate that into just a policy and include those within it, but that is not a conversation for today.
Okay.
Tricia, questions? There was a lot going on there. Okay. And I will send my summary as well. So we'll capture that. I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you, Lily. Thank you, board colleagues. Uh, let's have fun with zero, one, one, five and zero, one, one, five dash R. Because we need regulations and procedures.
It's okay with everyone. Could we look at the policy first?
Yes.
Cause I knew this. That the regulation that was shared with you is the one that did not make all the edits that we discussed at the last Policy Committee Meeting.
Okay.
And so I sent that to you along with sending it to Emily and Tricia again, and we will upload that we, it was essentially changing the word perpetrator to, right?
Right.
Yep. So we corrected, there's a corrected version coming to you momentarily.
Oh, so what was in Board DAX is not the right one?
The one that, um, when the meeting began, when on the agenda, it was the one that was not updated. The newest version was not uploaded to Board Doc. So we corrected that. We're gonna correct that right now. Thank you, Tricia.
Okay, so policy oh, one, one, five is the corrected version.
The, the policy is the corrected version.
And then we'll get to the procedure, so it needs some, some edits.
That's right. Thank you for that.
Uh, my uh, before I say anything, uh, board colleagues, uh, the policy zero, one, one, five.
I do not have any corrections to make.
I have two small thoughts. Uh, one is on the first paragraph of the policy. I believe it's the third sentence, both a student's ability to learn and thrive. And then the next, it says, and a school district's ability, that sentence.
Yeah.
Wondering if it should say both a student's ability to learn and thrive as well as a school's ability. When there's too many ands, I get confused.
You know, I think
Did we go over this already?
I think we should just get rid of them both. A student's ability to learn and thrive and a school's ability to educate and empower is compromised by incidents of bullying, cyberbullying, discrimination, hazemore, or harassment.
I agree with Laura.
And what about using as well as? I'm just trying to. I'm fighting for as well as. I don't know where it is in the grammar school, but.
And then does is get changed to are? Both is. But if you take that away and you have two different subjects, would it be are?
So just deleting both.
Just deleting both, capitalizing A.
And changing it to all.
Yeah, are. Instead of is.
Are compromised.
Okay.
We're sticking at the end.
Yeah.
I'm not sticking with it, but my colleagues are and I've been outboarded, so. Uh, and then um, the last thing for me on the policy is the second paragraph. The last sentence, all administrators, faculty, staff, and it goes on. And I'm wondering if that sentence shouldn't be removed and be the last sentence of the policy.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Sort of like a standalone.
Yeah, right.
If I'm not mistaken, that first sentence is, there's only two sentences in the entire paragraph. The first one is long.
Yeah.
Maybe, uh, maybe we'll see what our board colleagues think.
Yeah, I think so. Or even we could make that even a a final paragraph.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, right.
Pulled out as a final paragraph, same paragraph by itself.
I, one of the one. Thing that makes me hesitate is um. That. We move to talking about acts of discrimination and harassment outside of school sponsored events and. We're talking about. You know, faculty, staff, parents, caregivers, families, we're also talking about volunteers and contractors.
Mm-hmm.
And. I mean, how far are we going to see that if someone volunteers in in the school or is working on? A construction project. And then. You know. Totally unrelated, you know, there's someplace. Apart the the mall or something and they, you know, are they supposed to charge in and do something?
I think that's all the more reason to put it at the end. I mean, th- this sentence all has been starting with all administrator, it's just basically saying. Everybody's expected to be behave well and to.
Uh, but we're not saying like members of the public. Like any member of the public should say something off, I I I'm just wondering if it's going a bit far to to expect. You know, people who might have gone into the school once to always be on the lookout for something like this.
Uh, I don't think it's too far, that would be my expectation. If someone happens to, you know, go check on whatever and they see something, I would hope they would say something. I I get the idea, I I guess the question is, it's already in the policy. Right, so I'm not asking for its removal. I'm just asking to. Highlight it more, move it at the end, and the way in which the policy flows, that second paragraph, the first sentence. Is a pretty long sentence, it includes all the way down to there. And then it says furthermore, and it for me, the flow actually makes much more sense, right, like.
Right.
After that long sentence and furthermore, any act of discrimination harassment, right, um. So Pat, I hear what you're saying, we're going to be talking about volunteers, uh. A volunteer policy later today, and that's going to require us to do some additional thinking. But I was just thinking again in terms of flow, that last sentence seemed a little bit out of place for me.
Well, what what I'm talking about is is location and context of. This because. This sentence follows, um, you know. Taking place on school property or at school sponsored activities, programs or events that take place at locations off school property, and then that final sentence. Is. Basically taking it. Anywhere outside of the context of school.
I uh. I don't have a problem with that, I think, because again, I I I see it as not any kind of mandate, it's just. Saying behave well, you know, uh.
Yeah, refuse to to demonstrate civility and refuse to tolerate bullying. Alright, so how do we want to proceed with this piece here?
Um. If two thirds of the board wants to move it, then we'll move it of the committee.
Yeah. And should we though italicize code of conduct?
Sure.
Yes, we did in the last.
I did highlight it, yep. Uh. Amanda, would you have any thoughts about moving that sentence, that last sentence in the second paragraph?
No, Pat, I see your point, right, so it becomes almost aspirational in a way, right, that we'd want everybody. The dignity act does say that if it impacts school, even if it happens outside of school. Right, we're we're essentially mandated reporters to do something. Um, now, whether that means a staff person's going to intentionally delay. And work with their supervisor or their principal, right, on the Monday morning after the soccer game on Saturday to get. Some sort of feedback loop on what they're thinking, that could be, but I I hear you about like kind of. Putting that out there of like, can you extend a school district policy to when I'm grocery shopping?
Well, I I don't even mean staff members, I'm I mean, I'm looking at volunteers and contractors.
Sure. Yeah, so again, if they if they see something. Right, under the law, and if they know or should have known that it would impact. A child's learning experience, right, or their well-being or their physical, emotional or social health. They are, they are required to let us know about.
And are are volunteers and contractors educated about this?
So I I can speak for the contractors, so contractors, we let them know that the dignity act, this is nothing new to like. Campus construction, they know that when they're in schools, the dignity act applies, and so. Contractors don't get maybe an official training, but they get sort of like a how, like a here's what to look for kind of thing. Um, as far as volunteers go, we would have to, you know, I don't know what the relationship is with principals with the PTAs. We usually, the the building principals and department leaders are sort of the stewards of the training for their departments. Um, so that's something that's a check for me to do as the coordinator for the district.
Well, the NISBA recommended policy, which we'll get to later on, recommends that any volunteer undergo some form of. Training around harassment.
And and I'm not saying that they shouldn't, but I'm saying how far does the the responsibility? Extend like.
Past infinity, like we're way beyond infinity.
And they and they they may not know who, they may not know that they're our kid, whether that child is a child of the district they're working in.
True, true.
Then I'm fine leaving it where it is. Works for me, I I get the idea. Um, I still think we're going to have to reconcile this and some other policies as they come up as well. In terms of what is the reach and what is the expectation of the district and. Um, who is on our campus or our campuses, we should say. Um. So that works, so for right now, Tricia, the uh, code of conduct to be italicized. Is there? And then.
That one change to the first paragraph.
Yep, and change in the first paragraph. Um, the regulation you want us to hold off on or?
Well, Tricia with the updated. Okay, so the new one should be important now for you.
We have to refresh.
Yeah.
I did ask a couple of questions for me, like what is the minimum of annual training, is there a set standard or do we? Does the district set the standard, does the state set the standard?
It's actually in the law, so um. For coordinators, right, so. The board um appoints dignity act coordinators at your meeting in July, right, your reorg meeting. Um, those folks would receive training with more intensity during the summer, which is when we train admins, right? For their staff, it's been Lily and I have either done videos or we've gone on site or we have resources through Bosse's. And the principals and directors utilize those resources to then turnkey those trainings. For their building, right? Um, department leaders call me and we'll go in and we do trainings at the bus garage, we do trainings for food service, we do trainings. Um, across the board for departments that maybe their their staff aren't available at the building level when those staff meetings are occurring. There's lots of different uh ways that that training can roll out. And they're all available to them, it could be a PowerPoint deck, again, video or in person. And and we have colleagues who help us with that also at Bosse's if we, if we, the demand is too great.
Right. Uh. And maybe I'll have to refresh the policy as well, page three. Where, uh, where's the regulation? One second. Um, the appealing. Of. Yeah, it's definitely different, so I'll take a look. Um. I got a little confused when I was reading this about. Uh, appealing an investigation outcome. When it comes to the board and or board president. So in the middle of the first paragraph, I believe it says, right, in the event that the complaint involves. Um, the superintendent, the complaint should be filed with or referred to the board president. And so there's that process or the board vice president.
Right.
And then it goes on and says if someone disagrees with what the superintendent decided. Then the appeal process is to the board president as well.
Correct, yep, so wow, so there's two separate things, right, so the first paragraph. Is about someone who is is essentially said that person violated the dignity act, they treated me in a manner. That met the threshold in my opinion, so that's what that first paragraph is about, it's about individuals who potentially violated the dignity act. The other paragraphs are about more of the disagreement with the results of the investigation, so we have families who might say. You know what, I think that although you're taking this seriously, you said that it didn't meet the threshold and I disagree with you. And I want to appeal that. Right, so there's two, there's essentially a first try, which goes to the superintendent or their designee, which is often me. And then the second try would be they're not satisfied with that, it would go to you, so that's the that's the nuance between those two paragraphs.
Yeah, I think I I get what they're trying to communicate, I don't think it's um clear for folks who may be going to look to see what they should try to do.
Sure.
And I don't know how to make it clear, maybe, again, maybe it was just my reading of it as well. Um, it could have been, uh. And I'm not advocating to do anything, I was just like, oh, as I'm reading, it's like, okay, like, so who do I appeal to, right, like? Um. So that was just my thinking there. Any additional thoughts or reactions now that you get to?
I thought, uh, as far as that, this paragraph, the first paragraph. Um. I understand what it says here, but. I'm not quite fitting it in, Amanda, to what you said about the, you know, first, is there, is there an investigation? And they're disagreeing about whether there should be an investigation, and then secondly, there is a disagreement with the findings.
So all of these would require an investigation, there would never not be an investigation. Right, DASSA requires the investigation piece, so it's the findings of that investigation that somebody would disagree with, so we. We're required by law to send communication out to the families, right, and it's typically saying, you know, we've done this, we've spoken to the. Uh, students, we've spoken to any other witnesses, we looked at text messages, we pulled emails, like whatever it might be that involved was involved in the investigation. And we have found that, right, and so um, sometimes it says indeed violates the dignity act, right? Um, for this reason, um, or it might say it does not meet the threshold because it was unfounded, which also happens, right?
Okay.
And that's where a lot of times we would get the appeal, because we actually cannot find. The data. That someone says like my, you know, here's a great one, like my child really feels uncomfortable. In X class or in the hallway or on the bus, and so you pull the video and you're looking at, you know, and you're interviewing kids. And they're just like, no, like, you know, you're not finding anything.
Sure.
You can't. At that point in time. Can say that is founded, because you actually did, per your investigation, you didn't find enough. Evidence, not to say that you don't take that environment seriously. And not to say that you don't take steps and strides to improve the connectedness of that student to that environment. So the letters then go on to say, but these are still the steps that we will take, right, we take this very seriously, and you would see those in the DASSA letters.
Okay.
So that's where the appeal, the appeal would be, no, it's I want it to be founded.
Okay, and if. If. It is. It is founded and then a recommendation is made. Can either of the parties appeal that recommendation, is that a third procedure?
So if if it's reversed, Pat, if you're saying, so if it was initially unfounded?
No, I'm saying that it was, it was founded, it was found to be a violation of DASSA. And then. A recommendation as to the consequences is made. And that can also be appealed?
So the recommendations to the consequences, if it's disciplinary, would go through more of the disciplinary track, because even though DASSA might be. The door that opens, right, we would follow the appeal process for disciplinary action. This is about the outcome of the investigation, this is not about the consequences, because consequences can look all different ways. That aligns more with the code of conduct, right, and that aligns then with with our procedures for how we would. Um, address student behaviors, all that this is saying is that. This is the law, this is the language of the law.
Okay.
These these actions violated that the language of that law. Then the discipline, then the consequence process happens separately from that, this is not about appealing what, right, that would be the separate.
Okay. Yeah, I I just found, I found that a little confusing with any party who is not satisfied the. With the outcome of the district level investigation, but that that is entirely whether there is or is not.
That's right, right.
A violation.
They'd even say like, oh, you weren't thorough enough.
Yeah.
Right, you know, you didn't ask X ones, and a lot of times that'll happen when we're base, when they, um, where there's anonymity anonymity. Around like who they say were involved, and they're like, we we want to really protect them. And then that hinders a lot of times our investigation, they might come forward later saying, well, you it was unfounded. And you didn't ask these three kids, and we said, well, we didn't, we didn't have their names, and so that happens, right? The difference is that if it's unfounded, it doesn't go on the state report. If it's founded, it goes on the state report at the end of the year, we take all of them seriously.
Oh, yes, of course.
Yeah.
The thing that I'm confused about, okay. Upon receipt of the complaint, the superintendent or their designee shall probably investigate and equitably, equitably. Resolve all discrimination, bullying, cyber harassment and hazing complaints that are referred to them. As well as those appealed to the superintendent following an initial investigation, I don't get that last clause. What are the is two differences?
So the first one is that essentially you're creating a safe climate for a young person, right? If so, investigated, the resolve discrimination, so if his parent is saying it's still happening. Right, the superintendent will work either with their designee or the principal to ensure that stops. And then the second part of that, right, is as well as those appealed to the superintendent following an initial investigation. After that initial, the the initial investigation came up unfounded. That would then be investigated, I believe that that's how that reads, so that it's like a both an action to stop it, to stop the harm. And then to do the investigation again. That's how I I'm reading it, um.
So that.
Let's play with that one a little bit.
Well, and that has helped me, I think what I, I think what I need is then a new paragraph after that sentence.
Okay.
In the event the complaint involves the superintendent, I think I.
Yeah, I think that.
I think that would help me give a separation between what I was.
Yeah, create a new paragraph.
I would agree.
Great, that's great.
Yep.
Right, because it gets then into the who, who is the person that is claimed to have violated the dignity, correct, okay.
And then we can flow through there, then I get it, and then it jumps again, right, if the district level investigation, yeah, that, I think that would. Solve it for me. Yep. Um, and then two hopefully small things. Page four, under definitions. Discrimination is uh centered. Centered and should be left justified. If I'm not mistaken.
Wait, uh.
Mine's showing left justified.
It is left justified.
Mine does not.
Wait.
Neither does yours.
Oh, 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 I see, that last.
It is fixed, okay.
Perfect. That's an easy one.
Based on the Google Doc that I'll share.
Uh, page five, bullying behaviors may be.
Hmm.
Um. This is where I'm looking to my. Uh. Experts here, the second bullet, does it need an and or an or after the semicolon? And then the last bullet, no matter what it is, it needs a period and not a.
Uh.
Semicolon. So bullying behaviors may be. One bullet, second bullet, I don't know if it needs anything after the semicolon.
I I don't, I don't think we have to keep saying and or.
Right. But we did get the change from the semicolon to the. But we did get the change from the semicolon to the period after the third bullet.
Could they all just be periods at the end of each of them? Or do they need a semicolon since it's a list? A great question, I know.
You're doing it's a two.
So sorry, I'm sorry.
I I'm gonna vote for keeping the semicolon because that kind of implies the and or.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. And then the only thing for me at the end of this policy are any cross references to other policies or. Um, and or federal law that we should be hyperlinked.
So there there are a list in the current policy and Tricia, I you would like me to follow up with Kate to find that out, or if you want to do that. Just to eliminate whatever is outdated, um, I think would be great. So but those are, those are in the current policy right now. That would be at the very end, yeah, and they would, they would usually be italicized in um. In the current board docs policy that is on the books that is still, you know.
Yeah. It may just be as simple as a cut and paste.
And are those going at the end of the policy or the regulations?
Uh, either for me. Either works for me. Um, you have.
I think it should go at the end of the policy. I don't know why.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll follow that as well. Something I'm interested in. What it is. Um, what's out there? Uh, in this policy as well, I'm wondering, again, I don't know why I'm thinking about organization and structure in this way. Um, zero, one, one, six dash P, we know we formatted a particular way because it was uh forward and public facing. I imagine that this document may also be somewhat forward and public facing. And didn't know if we want to borrow or format in a similar way with the header, the ICSD logo on it, the. Title page makes it a little bit more prominent to read if that, you know, I was just thinking about what is the, does it invite me in as a policy or just look like it's legal means?
Sure. So, so I know Lily has a lot of documents that relate to sexual harassment that are, you know, more user friendly. Dasa does as well, because that's part of the requirement. So. Um, Casey every year updates that for us. It's a tri-fold brochure. We've had it for years. Um, we can definitely look at that in terms of the, you know, again, realigning it to the language here. Um, maybe updating some of those definitions and then creating a couple other tools for families to be able to have. One of them, I think, needs to be also translated, so I'll work with him on that.
Yep, and this is the sort of header I was talking about, like, should should it have a similar header like that?
Yeah.
Looking for it.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah.
And I don't know if. Hat and more, so I was talking about like, should it have this kind of header?
Uh-huh.
Right, as opposed to what it currently is, which is. Um, a little, I mean, I think all of our policies are like what's here, but we may start moving then. In a different direction.
Okay.
Um, I'm good with. You know, those changes, most of them have already been made. There's one, we're gonna take a look at cross referencing. But without with that, I'm good with this policy.
Me too.
Yep.
All right, Tricia, you got it. We're moving it forward for a second reading with some noted quick checkings. Fantastic. Thank you, Amanda.
Of course.
Greatly appreciated. Uh, the administration, uh, item, agenda item four point four. Um, five, four, two, three administrative medication and students. Yeah. Was uh big on paragraphs today. So one of them was thinking that we could add, keep the language as we have it. Um, but maybe break up the paragraphs slightly.
In the, uh, we're talking.
In the pot, the actual.
The actual policy.
So page one. And so, for example, in the very first paragraph. After the second sentence. Where it says the efficacy school district will provide for the administration, wondering if that could and or should be. A new paragraph or lack of better.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
It was just, it was easy to read on the eye if that was broken up. And then the other recommendation that I was thinking about would be in the second. Paragraph. Where it says in emergency circumstances. Um, it's, I think it's the second to last or that's the third to last sentence to make that a new paragraph as well.
I have no objection.
Yeah, me too.
Fantastic. You, I'll send it your way as well. Got that. Um, in the, uh. In the regulation, the where it says definitions. Again, I don't know if this is just my eye or my printer. But the student, the nurse dependent students, the very first sentence. Students who cannot self administer their own medication and who do not meet the criteria. Look like there are two spaces between meet and the criteria.
Where are we?
Meet and the, yep, it looks like two spaces to me.
You know, this is great, and this is how you're spending your evenings. Uh. The student, what am I right here? Well, no, I think that's just. Um, and maybe I didn't check this, uh, on page three. And I apologize if it already may already be there and folks may have already saw, I can take a look. Um, page three, it's got starts with bullets, right? Date issued, student's name, date of birth. Condition for which the medication is prescribed for both routine and PRN. Have we seen, was PRN identified before? Because otherwise I don't know what.
Where are we?
Page three. PRN.
But where, where in page three?
Uh, page three, the top.
Third bulleted point.
Point towards the top. And I didn't know what the acronym stood for, and I didn't see it in the policy as what the acronym stood for.
I feel like I asked that at the last board meeting when we read it and I can't remember.
I I don't remember.
So maybe we just ask a question about the acronym.
I wonder if it's. Supposed to be. Um. Prescription not required, PNR.
No, I.
Or patient, non-patient specific. I don't know. I can't remember.
For our thirteen.
It's listed twice in the policy, but at no point in time does it identify what the acronym means.
I feel like I really feel like I asked and got an answer and it's escaping me. So I think we just maybe just.
Ask again.
Ask you, yeah. And maybe be able to just. Put that in.
Right.
Yep. Yep. And I think that, I mean, I had one other. punctuation then, but. I think we're all good. Goodbye me. Also, oh, um, I know a lot of language went, um, a lot of work went into this policy and all the policies and I'm always very appreciative. So to my board colleagues, this was an interesting. Language that I had not thought about before. So as at the the very last page of. The policy, the regulation and procedure. Um, there's the first full paragraph, the director of health services and wellness. And then it says comma or future commensurate, commis- commensurate. Sure, supervisor. Um, and I was thinking about when we write policies to think about language like that. I mean, at one point in time, I think we identify. Um, Mary's position in a policy, right, that Lily's position is in a policy as well. But wondering if that's language we may want to think about, so we don't have to always change immediately when and or if. Titles change or.
Right.
Right, so but.
Right.
Just just a, just a note, it's like, oh, that's, that's, and it's good language we may want to borrow or.
Yeah.
Keep for later on. But nothing to do there, Tricia, no. Are you not gonna share the dictionary definition? I was all. I was eager.
You saw me, yes. Uh, well, I I was satisfied that it was okay. It. Mensure, I was just checking.
Yep.
Corresponding in size or degree in proportion, so it would be. Degree of supervision.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so.
I just looked at PRN.
Which means what?
Medical definition, the PRN prescription stands for pro renata. Which means that the administration of medication is not scheduled. Instead, the prescription is taken as needed. So it means, so as necessary.
So I'd like to ask our medical team that for folks who aren't in the medical field, it means as necessary. But I wonder for folks who are in the medical field, is it PRN that makes sense?
Uh, I've got, people ask, what does PRN mean in medical terms? What does PRN mean for a nurse?
Yeah. All right, so let's.
Well, maybe because it's confusing and adding the Latin is gonna not make it more, it's not gonna help. Um, so maybe we just like take it out and put as needed.
Uh.
Or something like medications, where have you got it?
Pro renata, P R O R E N A T A. That's not gonna help anybody.
No, right.
That in the, in the.
Maybe, okay, for both routine and um.
Oh, PRN as needed. That's what the, in parentheses, as needed.
Right.
That is, they are, they are defining PRN.
Right, so maybe take out PRN and just say as needed.
But health, but health providers under, I I think we leave it the way it is.
Okay, sure. Yeah, because this is really for them.
This is for them.
Right.
This is for people who are going to be administering medications.
Right, so.
Uh, yeah, let's hope it doesn't show up anywhere else.
Right.
All right, fantastic, fantastic. But, uh, leave as is, I'm, I still want to ask a question, um, but for right now, I I I didn't leave as is. Uh, we have our our board meeting procedures, um, agenda item four point five. Uh, my apologies, are we, um, at the point in time, my apologies to go backwards to four point four. Are we okay with sending this to the board for a second reading?
I am, yes.
Um, policy four point five, we've been talking about this policy for a while. It's two, three, five, zero board meeting procedures. In essence, it's our agenda. And how our agenda is structured. Um, we've been having, again, some dialogue and conversations and want to try to. Get the agenda to be in line with our practices and make any changes that we think would. Facilitate a, uh, a more efficient board meeting. If that is possible.
Right.
And just as an example, um, we've been calling to order, uh, at this point in time, we don't have it in here, though we can't, we should mention it. Do we have it in here? Um. No, it's not in this policy about executive sessions. Executive session has its own policy. But we don't make mention in the um, board meeting procedures that the board can enter into executive session. At any point in time with a majority vote of the board. That probably should be in this.
Where is that? I've, no, I've seen it.
Executive session policy.
Oh.
Is two, three, three, zero.
It definitely should be in here.
This one as well.
Yeah.
So maybe we at least allude to or see.
Right.
You know, please see two, three, three, zero. I imagine we're probably not gonna change that. We may be able to borrow some of the same language.
Right.
Um, and here it, right, that an executive session can be requested by any member of the board or the superintendent. Um, which, which is interesting, I I want, we should verify that.
Yeah.
I didn't know the superintendent could ask us to enter into exec, could you still do the motion? In a second and then a vote.
Um, yeah, we should maybe, we should probably check on that, um. Cause uh, where, which one is that? What else is that?
Uh, two, three, three, zero, executive session. Which we last modified. In two thousand sixteen, though I I don't remember. Uh, modifying in two thousand sixteen.
I don't either.
Um, it does say we adopted it in two thousand thirteen. That seems more aligned with my memory is.
It's, wait. Where is it?
Two, three, three, zero.
Two, three, always accessions right in front of me, okay. Right.
So what I'm seeing just on policy two, three, five, oh. Is I'm seeing numbers one, two, three, four, five, and then one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, going back to the superintendent. I mean, I think the superintendent can request it, but then a board member must make a motion. And I think that's, you know, kind of.
Take care of so.
Yeah.
And again, we'll have to get checked with legal, but it's my understanding that a school board member. Can make a motion to enter into executive session at any point in time during the meeting.
Right.
And it may be a point of order, it may be a point of clarification, right, but that. You know, within these realms and noting what um, Mara has been requesting us to do and others as well. But to be um, more explicit and specific about why we're entering into the executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you know, this is dictated by open meetings law, so there are certain standards obviously we have to meet.
And here's something, it says upon majority vote, five of its members. Um. I mean, is it already at least five? Like if we, if we only have five members in attendance. Does it take all five? To go into an executive session?
It does.
Okay.
So right, that's language you maybe want to clarify as well, right, to be. Um, as a non-member board, you are required if five members agree, whether the, whether all nine are present or not.
Uh-huh.
Hmm.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if that's.
And that, I I was a little bit confused at the last meeting when we. We just barely had a quorum.
Yeah.
Um, to pass something. We could pass it. With, you know. We, can we pass it with three votes?
No. You need, you need a majority of of the full board, no matter how many people are in attendance. And there's just no use having a board meeting if there are not five people there.
Right, but all five have to vote because like the vote on on the budget.
Yep.
We did not have.
We did. It was five to one.
It was five to one. Oh, okay, all right. That's where I was confused.
So to Pat's point, though, the language proper should say upon a majority vote of the full board. Or some language like that, that cat at that very point. Um, but yes. Um, if we go back to the board meeting procedures, for example. Um, one, we have not said the pledge of allegiance in some time.
Right, and I just like. It, it's been driving me crazy now for three years that it's on every single agenda. And we haven't done it in three years.
Right, right, since COVID because, right, just doing, uh, we tried it the first couple of times on virtual.
We did, I don't.
We did, tried it once, twice, yeah, it it had a different vibe to it. I'm wondering if there isn't a way in here to to keep it on the agenda, but then put parentheses optional. Um, or do we take it off? Or do we start saying the pledge?
I would be in favor of taking it off because based on my research, we don't have to do it.
No.
Um. So, and we haven't been doing it and nobody's said anything, um. And if a future board wants to start doing it, they can change the policy. That, and that's, this is just my opinion.
Yeah.
Along, along those lines, I don't recall that we've ever done a formal attendance, like a roll call.
No, we don't.
We've not called the roll.
Perhaps we should.
Uh, right, maybe we should.
I think that would be more useful for the general population.
Okay. Trying to take some of these notes too, Trisha.
Yeah.
Uh, what we have been doing is having special presentations.
Right.
Before anything else, right, to make sure that we can get to the young folks.
But we haven't, we haven't done that very, very long in my twelve years on the board, that's fairly recent.
Very recent.
Yep.
And. I don't know, I mean, we haven't as a board had a full discussion of that, I. I, I do have a, have concerns about, you know, public comment. These are people who may want to speak about something and then go about their, their business. And it may take five minutes and it may take fifty. Although we're supposed to set aside no more than thirty, but we have overridden that in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And that. The number of special presentations that we get makes that a very erratic schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I am against that in principle, that. Um.
That is.
That the, that the public, like, we can say. At the beginning of each meeting, the board anticipates going into executive session, if we anticipate going into executive session. If something comes up in a meeting, then that might be unanticipated. But it's still within our purview as a board, something may have come up that day or the day before.
Hmm.
Um, but the. It would be difficult to. I mean, student presentations are going to vary so much in time. That that's going to put a. I, in my opinion, that's just going to make for a very, um, unpredictable schedule, which. I don't know serves the best. Uh, purposes of the general public.
And that's, you know, what a lot of people have been raising. One, a suggestion I have perhaps. And I don't know how we actually, you know, put it into the policy. Is that we have our. Public comment that if it's going to go longer than thirty minutes. Then we go ahead with the rest of the agenda. And, um. Or at least with the special presentations. And then return to public comment later, so. Um. You know, a lengthy public comment doesn't kind of derail. Uh, and, and force. Staff and students, uh, to sit there and, and wait, um. With no idea of.
Mm-hmm.
How long it will be.
Well, I think we've been trying to work against sometimes competing interests, right?
Right.
One is to make sure that we're being attuned to public comments and folks who come to speak to us. And making sure they have some idea, a reasonable timeframe of when to expect that. And the flip side has been the same thing for folks who have come to give presentations. And then didn't get to start presenting until eight thirty.
Right.
Because we had forty-five or fifty minutes of public comments and then board responses.
Right, yeah, public comment and board response, yeah.
And then student, um, uh.
Students, yeah.
Um, delegations as well. Um, I don't know. I don't want to put you in a position to put one over the other, so I don't know what the best path forward is. We've tried to have this conversation as part of a whole board. Um, I don't think, you know, I think we just kept spinning some of the same arguments around and around, and so. I think.
Factor that, um, with the, with public comment. Public has the option to comment virtually. Which is, you know, a, a lot more convenient, um. If they don't know exactly when it's going to begin. You know, have their computer on, uh, and. Be doing other things, but.
But for the majority of people who come down to comment in person. And off, and now more and more it has been the majority.
Yeah, the one thing I will do is back up and talk about having exec session to begin the meeting is that that is not unusual. Um, across legislative and elected bodies.
Right.
Um, and in particular, I think we started doing that, actually, it predates, I think, any of our time on the board. Uh, because there are a number of times where there are folks who are coming to speak, where it would be in the board's best interest.
Mm-hmm.
To have entered into executive session.
Right.
To discuss whatever the comment or the issue may be.
Right.
To be better informed, either not to speak.
Right.
Provide insight that may be helpful, and so we've also tried to balance that as well, like, should the board be informed about particular issues? Prior to receiving public delegates. Um, or should the board receive the public, public delegates, not speak? And then enter into executive second, should that be the want and will of the board? And I don't have a answer or a solution.
Uh, my, my preference is that in the twelve years I've been on the board, having the, the option of that. Half hour to hour. Has been invaluable.
Right.
And has saved us a lot of time on the backend. Um, I, there are so many, there are so many. Situations that we have been briefed on in exec session. That if I had been taken flat footed, just going into the meeting and we had an exec session afterwards, I'd be getting home at midnight.
Sure.
And, and. I'm not in favor of that. I, I mean, I'm not in favor of getting home at midnight on. And I think lately we have had fewer executive sessions, which. Which streams, streamlined the meetings more. Um, but of course, makes it less predictable when people should be giving public comments.
Well, I think maybe one of the things we can consider is that we try to be as clear as possible, sorry. We try to be as clear as possible whenever the agenda is published, either that Friday or that Saturday. That it tries to be explicit about whether or not there'll be an exec session. And what time we anticipate public comment to begin. Um, or as best as we possibly can, and I know we reach out, or people reach out to you and you are back in communication. With them, so that has seemed to work out, but there's been other instances where, again, right. It's been seven thirty, and people have been here since six thirty waiting to speak.
Right.
And trying to figure that part out, and so. Um, maybe this is not something that we can decide today, maybe we spend. Maybe this, another school district that has a miracle agenda, sort of reminds me of.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, right.
Showing me the perfect calendar.
Yes.
You know, right, you show me a perfect agenda and then, but maybe we can even reach out to some of your board clerks and see how they. May handle, how the districts may handle this. Um, because I think everything else sort of takes care of itself, right, we're not really worried about the rest of the agenda. We can extend public comment any point in time by a majority vote of the board. Um, so that's not the issue, the issue is where should it be placed in? Should we make room for any special presentations in particular, if they include? Students, especially elementary school students. That we've had in the past. Uh, I'm gonna do what I know I shouldn't do and call on Lily that we've been discussing the agenda and. Special presentations and from your work with our teachers and our students, is there, um. Uh, I'm not asking whether or not you all have a preference, I'm just saying, is there any input to add about the way in which our board agenda is organized?
Thinking, we always want to welcome folks from. Our community to share all the fabulous things that they're doing, or, or have, if they have, they've prepared specific asks, et cetera. Um, and in general, because of the un- unknown time. And how long public comment will be, especially when we're talking about students and teachers who have to teach the next day. Um, you know, in, in general, their request has then been, please let us go first. So that we can know when we're going to start and, and end, so we can go home and we can get ready to teach and, you know. Learn the next day, um, so that would be my preference, um, you know, I also, of course, welcome and value the public and want to make sure that. They have opportunities to share, that at the end of the day, we serve kids, and if kids are presenting, we should let them go first.
What if, in hearing that, thank you, in hearing that, what if there was something that said, if there's a special presentation, it's allotted only or specifically twenty minutes? Right, so if we have a special presentation that's coming, whatever the presentation is. That we anticipate public comment starting at seven twenty or.
Well, but then, you know, generally, there's a presentation and then the board.
Yep.
Has questions and comments, which, which definitely makes it longer.
Yes.
And sometimes has made it extremely longer.
Right.
And I, I remember some meetings where we've had two or three presentations and I have looked. Cause I was one of the ones spacing out, has looked at teachers basically falling asleep at nine, nine thirty, who haven't gotten a chance to, uh, present. Um. I think we, we're, we're scheduling no more than one special presentation per meeting now, which is good.
Right.
Yeah, we moved away from that for that very reason. Um, all right, well, at the sake of. Still keeping this up in the air, why don't we continue to do some additional research? And see if there is something that comes back and try to make a decision about what to do. Um, you know, we already know there's some language that we should change to clarify. In both the policy and the executive session, the agenda policy and the executive session policy. And maybe we can go from there.
While we're on this list, and I know we have to come to a close, I would just like say, um, board committee reports. I don't think should ever come before other. Special presentations or school district business, we, I mean, we normally put those at the end. Right after, like, board committee reports and then other business.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, too.
Sounds good, sounds good. All right, well, we'll float some things out. Put it out there and see how folks respond to it and go from there. Um, I'm aware of time as well, the last, uh, agenda item for us was volunteers in the school district. Um, Lily has received a sample policy from NISBA. Um, I don't know if Moira and Pat are on the Google Doc or not, and if not, I, I can add them. Um, I went through and read NISBA's policy. A good portion of it was just sort of, hey, um, you should think about this, uh, but it wasn't actual language for the policy. But there are some recommendations, some things that I, I don't think that we're doing currently as a district. Um, but it includes things like, uh, listing the names of two non-family references.
Mm-hmm.
Of completing a volunteer application form, which the district maintains on file. Um, and there's, you know, different. Arguments about either the building principal or designee, or maybe it's a program person, right, for thinking about something like. Um, some of our theater productions or code red or athletic teams, right, whatever it may be, I think there's some. Thought that has to go into that. Uh, but there's no doubt that we need, um, I would recommend that we need a policy on volunteers in the district. And how to do that without making it onerous and still protecting the, the district's responsibility and liability, I think would be, be key. So I'll send it to our policy committee members, it's right now, it's, it's a page. So thankfully, it's not, um, you know, overly excessive, but it does try to outline some practices that should happen, including. Pat, to your point earlier, that volunteers would go through some form of. Training and we can, you know, and I don't know what that means either, is that a three hour training or? Um, is it, you know, you have to read this pamphlet and sign this waiver, right?
What was the policy, Sean, that, and Maura, you may have been doing this too, that we worked on? Like visitors to school buildings, and it was, it was people who. Were regularly volunteering.
Yep.
As opposed to like the one-time visitor.
Right.
Yep, these are absolutely connected and probably should be read in tandem together.
Yeah.
Um, because sometimes it's, you know, a visitor to the school building can be considered a parent or guardian.
Right, right.
If that's a visitor, and then there are other times where there's people who are using their expertise. To volunteer in the school district. And, um, so they are the same and similar, but both will probably need updating.
And I think that, that one of the, the concerns, um. When that policy was developed was that often, uh, school leaders were not aware of who was being brought into their buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
Or for, or for what purpose, or for how long, so.
So I'll share this policy with you as it currently reads from NISBA. If it's okay with you, I'll work with Lily to try to figure out what may work for our district and what may be the recommendation from central administration and. Lily, I presume that you'd be having some conversation with building leaders too, about what they would want to see or what they need to see. As well, and then we'll bring that back, we'll put it on the next agenda, um, I think we can do some work over the next month, maybe. And try to at least bring it back with a little more, uh, conversation and discussion.
Great, okay, sounds good.
Well, we are all set. I want the record to show, I'm only two minutes over, and I will bring this meeting to a close, and I will follow up with Tricia with all the things we discussed.